Good evening. I'm going to call this meeting of the Hardin County Board of Education to order. And if everyone will please stand, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you for coming out tonight. And Mr. Blang, do you have our board commitments?
I'll be glad to. To improve our effectiveness, the Hardin County Schools Board of Education commits to keeping children first, to listen, to be prepared, to be professional, to demonstrate financial stewardship, to represent the entire district and support district goals, and to support board decisions.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Wright, you have our recognitions?
Yes, ma'am. So we have our Better Together Awards that we'll present this evening. We have some awesome people to do that, to present to, and so if you'll pass that resolution, we'll get started.
So moved.
Have a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
All right. Ms. Paulie, do you mind to put down the screen? So tonight's recognition of awesome artwork, so I wanted you guys to, wanted our board to see this artwork. And this young lady is standing beside hers, and so we're going to bring her up first, Ms. Amari Jones. Amari is an eighth grade student, and there's a plaque there, Mr. Casey. Amari is an eighth grader. Mr. Casey has a gift for you up there. Amari is an eighth grader at Bluegrass Middle School. Amari has taken an interest in art since the age of three and has competed at several competitions. Her most recent award was at the National Beta Convention, where she placed eighth in digital art. Amari has done drawings, paintings, logos, and digital art. However, until the summer, she had never completed a mural. She was up for the challenge by placing a mural at New Highland Elementary. She was excited to be able to create something of her own that showed students from different backgrounds have many abilities and opportunities to learn. And there she is, standing by her beautiful work. She did a great job. There's a lot of detail in there, and she did an amazing job, Amari. Thank you for doing that for our students at New Highland. We appreciate it. And I know some of your family is here, right? Stand up, Mom, Dad, looks like brother, maybe? Come on now. There you go. So, thank you all. Great job, Amari. Thank you.
Good job.
Super job. And Sydney Urbans, this is Sydney Urbans. She's a seventh grade student at East Hardin Middle School, and she also has a passion for art and a love for others. She volunteers at New Highland during field days, serving in a variety of ways, including providing face painting. She's also served the community by initiating and collecting lunchboxes she packed for some homeless clients of warm blessings who had just found jobs. She thought it would be a way, a wonderful way to help them if they could save money by taking their own lunch to a new job and then gaining some confidence. Knowing that New Highland Principal Shalise Packer has a passion for STEAM curriculum and teaching kids to have a growth mindset, she created an original mural outside of Ms. Packer's office and volunteered this summer to paint it. She looks forward to hearing how the students react and included a rainbow star on the wall with a bowl pup kindergarten graduate recommended the idea. She hopes the star and all of the art make the kids feel special and it encourages them and brings them joy. And again, great detail. Sydney, you did a great job. Thank you for helping the students. And Sydney's family is here. Stand up, guys, be recognized. Thank you all. She's got a wonderful family. So, Ms. Molly Hazel, come on up here, Ms. Hazel. And I'm, I've got another...
It's a month of art.
It is. So, Ms. Hazel is the art teacher and the Beta Club sponsor at East Hardin Middle School. Ms. Hazel has saved the district several dollars, board, which you'll enjoy hearing, by placing the school's logo right there on the school's gymnasium wall this summer. After pricing the project, Ms. Nickel, who's here tonight, shared with Ms. Hazel about the possible project costs. Ms. Hazel quickly responded with, "I can do that." And she did, in an amazing fashion. Mrs. Hazel's talents and stewardship are certainly a true treasure for East Hardin Middle School, its students, and our district. Thank you, Ms. Hazel. We appreciate it. And Ms. Blackwell, Gaila Blackwell, I do not have a picture for her, but she does her own pictures. She is the owner of Blossoms and Heirlooms, which is a flower and gift shop in Vine Grove. She and her staff bring fresh and free flowers to several HCS schools in the northern part of the county throughout the school year. These flowers certainly brighten the room and bring happiness to all who see them. Blossoms and Heirlooms has done this for many years, even when Mrs. Morgan was a principal, and we won't say how long ago that was. And she's never asked for anything in return. HCS is very grateful to Blossoms and Heirlooms for its continued generosity. Thank you. And Madam Chair, we have one other recognition I think deserves recognition. It's not on the, it is not on the resolution of recognition, but sitting beside you is the 2024 Kentucky Association of School Administrators Superintendent of the Year. So, if I spent money on a plaque, she, I might not come to work tomorrow because I may not need to come to work tomorrow. So, anyway, just know, and we did, I will say this, her plaque, her trophy that she received for that award did not have her name on it. So we did have her, a plate made with her name, and that will go on her award. So congratulations, Ms. Morgan.
Thank you. And thank you for mentioning that, John. That's something that we are all, all very proud of her and proud for our district, and it just, it speaks volumes for the work that is done, and it all starts from the top. And there's, nothing could be done around here if not for all the hard work that she puts in. So we're, we're very, very proud of her and very lucky to have her. All right, with that, Mr. Sutton, you got our focus on academics?
I do. We have a lot to share tonight. I want to start off by giving a shout out to all of our teachers, instructional assistants, all certified and classified staff that went through professional development this summer. We, obviously, we have four days of PD every year, but I think we've gotten so much better to our very content and process-specific PD, so our teachers can get better at their craft. And their growth mindset was, was very good this summer. I want to thank not just them, but all the presenters from ISD and other departments that helped us have a successful PD season. I want to thank Debbie Wyatt for the organization, and just a quick shout out, because now they, they're in the school buildings now and putting that to, to good use. So just want to start off with that tonight. So greatly appreciated. We do have a student here with us tonight. We're going to start with Reagan Raef Snyder from Central Hardin High School, Abound Credit Union sponsor, to go to WKU Personal Finance Summer Camp. We actually had five students and some from other schools that were projected to go as well, they ended up not being able to make it. I really hated that because she had a great experience. She's going to share that with you tonight. We're also going to have an update on the work we've been doing in our math continuum, our math philosophy and our increased math time, and Ms. Broner's going to share that tonight. And we're also going to give you an update on our, our work that we've been doing with our foundational literacy with Ms. Sharon. So we've got a lot to share tonight. We're going to start with Reagan. Everybody give her a big round of applause. I'm glad to have her here tonight.
This is the general experiences and case study presentation that I experienced at the WKU Personal Finance Summer Camp. The presentation talks about everyday experiences, curriculum taught by WKU, curriculum taught by guests, abound involvement, the case study introduction, and the case study presentation. This is everyday experiences at WKU. Everybody stayed in the Monday Hall. A few people left, but that was because they had like homes and stuff. Monday Hall was one of the newer dorms, so it was great to, great to experience the finer part of WKU. And the campus cafeteria food was, it was always good because we had a diverse option while still having staple foods every day. And it was also fun to experience activities that went beyond the lessons at WKU, like the bowling alley in Bowling Green, and then the game room at WKU, which had numerous pool tables and ping pong tables. At WKU, most of the lessons we were taught, like insurance and budgeting, were by Professor Head, who was the head of the camp, which is kind of funny. During insurance, he walked us through the importance of having insurance, the different types of insurance available, like home, automotive, medical, and life. And then he talked about how they factor into the financial world, like how to budget for them, what they, what the costs look like. He also talked us through a very brief and rough budget of what a college student will have, and then also told us how to improve on that budget and apps that can help us improve. Professor Rhodes talked about investing and how to navigate the stock market and good Abound talked to us about the differences in banks and credit unions, and then walked us through car shopping and car tips on how to purchase your first car. And then we also went to local businesses that were off-campus, and they talked us through what their business was about, how they got their business, and how their business has grown. Abound was greatly involved in the camp. They had their name everywhere. We got a lot of supplies from them. We almost didn't have to take anything but ourselves there because they gave so much. But they also talked to us and gave us lessons about who they are and what they do. And then they were also involved in the presentation aspect as they judged and awarded the winners of the presentation. We had a case study at the camp where we worked as personal advisors for a college student named Sid. We were all split up into different groups to promote teamwork with people from different backgrounds. And the case study was giving a presentation about one section that we worked through, and they're all based on what we were taught as lessons by the camp. The case study that I have chosen is Sid's job benefits because she had recently grad, is about to recently graduate college, and she's got two job offers lined up. And we looked through job benefits, and we looked through the benefits of each job, but we also went over healthcare terminology for her because jobs will involve healthcare terms that will be important for anybody to know, and they were not often taught in schools. So we thought it would be good to go over them with her. She had two jobs available, each with their own benefit, different salaries, different 401K plans, and different medical plans with her. But we ultimately, ultimately decided that job one was the best for her because we looked at the planning for her 401K and saw that job one will offer better opportunities for her in the future, and that we also decided that her health insurance plan at job one was better because she didn't have to make monthly payments, which can be hard for college students, new college students or graduating ones. And that's all.
So we were given this opportunity probably in, what, late March, April? It was late. And so I tried to get to the business department, said nominate two kids from each school. We'll try to get them to go. And they had, the people that got nominated by their teachers didn't have anything, you know, we were hoping they didn't have anything going on that week. She was the only one that I could actually make it. So I'm working with Abound this year. I'll be working with the business departments at the high school earlier this year. We'll be nominating two juniors from each school, try to plan ahead of time so they have anything that may prevent them from going. I think this is a great opportunity for our kids. We appreciate our community partner. It's real life. It connects to our financial literacy initiatives, and I think it's more like a project-based learning experience where they get a, you know, do this, this module. So I appreciate Reagan coming tonight. She's one of our great students at Central Hardin, and I hope to hear from more next year. So thank you all.
Again, what grade are you?
I'm a, I wouldn't go to, but we fully understand.
We fully understand.
Okay. We're going to talk about, I'm Carlina Sharon. I'm a director in the Instructional Services Department, and I'm going to talk about reading, which I love. I was just here with you a couple months ago, talking to you about Senate Bill Nine, which is also about reading. But I'm very proud of our district because we have invested in a process called Orton-Gillingham. It's not a program, it's not a product, it's a process, which I think helps our teachers even more because we're learning best practices in reading based on evidence-based research. And those strategies can be used no matter what program, what process, what product you might use in the future. So we're super excited about that. I think the thing that we're most excited about is the process that we're learning. Our students are learning gestures, movements, that help, help them have memory muscle for, like knowing the vowel sounds and knowing those kinds of things. And those are internal tools, internal strategies that no one can ever take away from a student. So it doesn't matter whether they go to the next classroom and they have the right poster that reminds them. They've learned some gestures and some movements that is helping them remember what they learned, and we're super excited about that. All kindergarten through second grade teachers have been trained in comprehensive. All third through fourth, fifth grade teachers have been trained in morphology, which is vocabulary or the study of forming of words, with the exception of just a few people who got hired late, and we have a plan in place for those people to get trained. So when we're looking at the, the numbers of teachers who have been trained, we've had 336 teachers, kindergarten through second grade, trained in the last three years. We have had 173 third through fifth grade trained in the last three years. We started with a very small group in 2019, but we have actually had larger groups started in the 2021 school year. Our preschool teachers are using some of the same vocabulary when it comes to handwriting, and using the, our preschool teachers are using the same gestures for showing what vowel sounds sound like. All of our third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers are going to be teaching morphology in their classroom. So if you're a math teacher, you're still going to be learning these processes for teaching vocabulary, science, because that is such an important part of all of those content areas. And when we look at data, like of how we've been doing so far, because we are tracking all of that, we're very excited because as we finish a full three years of, of our teachers being trained, this year, six of our nine kindergarten, at kindergarten level, six of our nine schools showed an increase in reading from this year, from last year to this year. Nine of our 12 first grade classroom, or first grade at each school showed an increase. Six out of 12 of our second grade and 10 out of 12 of our third grade. And then we had our, our increases, like our highest increase in kindergarten for a school was 16%. Our highest increase in first grade for a school was 31%. So the ranges were wide, but that was our highest. Our highest in second grade was 20%, and our highest in third grade was 12%. And then third grade is also, their, their focus is very much on morphology. So they, we looked at the vocabulary scores, and the highest increase we saw in a school was 24%. So fourth and fifth grade just got trained this past summer, and we will start to see them implement that this year. Our Instructional Services Department makes numerous walkthroughs to be able to give positive feedback, be able to see if there's anything we need to do to help. But our schools are doing a great job. Our administrators are doing a great job, and we're starting to see some real positive growth in the area of reading. So I think we've made the, we're all rowing the boat in the right direction, and we're all doing it, you know, using the same language and helping our students. So when they go from kindergarten to first grade, they're hearing some of the same things they heard. So it's just building their confidence.
Good evening. I'm Stacy Broner. I love reading, but I'm going to talk about math. John, if you'll go to like the third or fourth library, it's math. So I am super excited. You know, we've been working really hard on literacy for several years, trying to get everything to kind of be streamlined and click and get our growth and bounce back pre-pandemic, and I think we've done a really fabulous job with that. So we realized, you know, we've really got to get into our math initiatives and really focus on, on math, and we, we need to have that growth that we're seeing in our reading areas to happen in our math areas as well. So we've had a few things that I am excited and proud of that we've got going on for Hardin County Schools. And as you, if you look at the screen, there are several things that we've got that will be, that have started, and we've just kind of continuously built onto it. But I was here, I think last, at some point last, a few months ago, talking to you about our, our new math standards continuum. When we have that, we did some work, and I'll show you some specifics, but we worked with a team of teachers, creating some exit slips that go along with the standards to help identify what mastery looks like, just kind of goes along with our comprehensive work that we've got with iReady, our iReady program. We also went ahead and next steps and built a continuum in our intervention system for those children that go through the intervention process, our MTSS, so that we have math calculation continuums in reasoning and calculation. So when we are pulling kids and working in intervention, we are hitting the really important skills that matter during that extended time. We did build assessments for that as well, so we'll know what mastery looks like in a few questions for each one of those areas to help teachers with that. Another area, we've increased the math block time in our schools to 70 minutes. We felt that we need more time. We need more time to deliver the instruction, that explicit direct instruction, and we need kids to have more time to process and to work through it. And so we have set that expectation for our schools to build that into their schedules. And then the last thing that's mentioned there is the work that we're doing with GREC. I told you I'm a reading person, but I am slowly loving and, and getting into the math piece here, and GREC has really helped with that. We're doing what we call a transformational cycle. We started off with a few schools in the first year, it was two years ago. They came in with a team, and then this year, we've got our rest of our schools coming in with a team of kindergarten to second grade. We've got one school that's going to have an intermediate team that's going to be working in this process as well. But it's just the way we've looked at math and how we've dug in as a team and what we've brought back to the schools to implement has been huge. If you'll go to that next slide. So this is just a snapshot of what that continuum looks like, and each grade level has one. And I know there's a lot of what you're seeing here, it's very busy, but it has our math standards listed on here. It has links in here so that teachers can go and say, okay, what does, and you don't have to link in, we're going to see another page, John, here in just a minute. But if you click in on certain areas like the number, it'll tell a teacher, what does the standard really asking? Because I think sometimes there's confusion on what a standard can really represent. Up there where you see that pink arrow, this is where we've linked in our agelastic exit slips that we worked on this summer. John, if you go to the next screen, this is what it looks like if you were to click on that. So each grade level has a sheet that looks like this, and so it has every standard listed. Again, if you, you click on the link there at the standard, it'll tell you what the standard is. Where you see it highlighted with gray, again, that is, you know, your priority standard's what was reported on the report card, so teachers still can keep up with it that way. And then if they click on the link where it talks about the exit slip, they will give, be able to assign a student five questions that deal with that standard. They can push it out in a Google Classroom, or they can print it. John, if you'll click again, this is what a teacher looks like when she or he clicks onto that exit slip. So it does look very foreign, but I want you to see in the next slide what it looks like for a student when it's pushed out. And you can even see the level of type of question that it's asking. So it's, it's one of those that's really making our students think. And so once we have this exit slip completed, then the, the teacher can go in on the continuum and date it if the student is showing mastery. And then that's, the continuum's a great visual to know where the gaps are and where we need to address during small groups or during intervention time. If you'll back, yeah, right there. On GREC, the last item that I mentioned, again, I've been very excited about the work we've done with GREC. During this time, we have focused on building a culture of learning in math, because I think we want kids very early on to love math and understand it's not a scary thing, and not fear being to fail in math. I think when we all started off, Dr. Denning would put problems up, four problems on the board, and it was just a visual, and they were all right, but she wanted us to start talking about what we were seeing, because we all see math differently. And she wanted us to be okay with that, and I think that's what we want to do with our students. We want to get their way of thinking as we start to develop and move forward with math. The other big thing that we, we were learning in GREC was that deepening, deepening understanding of the why and how, why it's essential for this foundational numeracy piece to develop our proficient mathematic students. We've researched the evidence-based tools. We've gotten, it's been so nice. They have just equipped us with so many tools, and we come home with bags every time of hands-on materials. And that's the thing that we're pushing with teachers. It doesn't matter, you know, kindergarten to fifth grade, that hands-on portion is so important for kids to see and understand and, and build that, that sense of math. And then just understanding that NCTM's math teaching practices and the cognitive demand. So looking at a lesson and, and understanding what is the demand of the, the rigor, the cognitive demand on this lesson. And on the last page, this is just an idea of some of the things that we see from GREC. So the one has us do like analysis of the work that we're, that we're asking students to do, you know, what kind of level are we asking and working at? The other one that you see is a rubric, and so we were provided rubrics, and we would go in and we would just look at what students were doing, their assignments, and we had to just look at, is it rigorous? Is it demanding? And if not, what was causing it not to? And, and the, the funny part about this is sometimes an assignment is rigorous, but we put so much support in it, and we, we lead and take, you know, and are helping the students so much that we remove that rigor. And so we were actually analyzing what was happening in this, that we really wanted the student to work more and be the one that was, you know, having that productive struggle, and that we weren't removing it because that's where the learning was taking place. And so after that, we would debrief and talk about what we were seeing and how to adjust it. So moving forward, we were just improving each time.
So what's G R R E C?
GREC, okay? That is the Green River, what is this? The...
Green River Regional Educational...
Educational... Quap River, yes.
It's good to say what those words are when you, when they come up.
Sorry.
I know we know, but...
Well, you know, I had to ask too, because I've just said GREC for so long. I know it stands for something, and I know where to find it every time I drive down there.
Yeah. I know where it is.
Okay.
So that helps.
So we, Stacy, Carlina, myself, we do these training days with our cohort of teachers. Last year, we traveled to Bowling Green. This year, for our four or five schools, they're actually coming to E-Town to us. So it's actually closer to home, which is good. Even though we traveled last year, they're sort of going to be here with us, and we're all in this together. And I like the extended time we're having in our classrooms with the 70-minute block. You know, practice, you know, they always say makes permanent, but Larry Bird say, the more I practice, the luckier I get. You know, so maybe get to those tough problems, you maybe will think your way through a little bit more. But very proud of the work that our team's doing. I appreciate you all letting us share that tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for bringing it.
Just, our Instructional Services Department is phenomenal. They have done great work over the summer and having great plans to make sure we're all moving in the right direction and providing that assistance as we go. So thanks to our Instructional Services Department.
So is this pretty much statewide, this plan, the way it's being done?
No, sir. This is Harden Camp. Our efforts to improve...
So that's the reason we're on top.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
These things make a difference. They really make a difference.
They do, really.
Thank you.
And I suspect sometimes the growth factor is totally really, in my opinion, set things back. And hopefully, we can gain 20% or, I listen to the percentile numbers, and if we can keep that game. Some of those kids got out of school before we could help them, but... them, but the younger ones has been through this stressful time.
Yes.
Hopefully, they can obtain what they need to by the time they get out of school.
Right. Well, in planning strategically for that, you're just not throwing it a dart at and going, well, I hope it works. We're actually strategically planning, so they've done a lot of work toward that. So answer those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Quarter, you got a departmental update for us?
Yeah, John right ruined my joke. I was going to go, John, pull up my slides. I don't have any slides.[630.32][630.32](Laughter). No, I just wanted to give you a, a quick update of how we're doing. Knock on wood, really good start.
Yes.
We're currently.
Well, we're, we're not in the news, and I really appreciate that.[642.41][642.41](Laughter).
We will not speak about that.[645.82][645.82](Laughter). But yeah, I've taken a few phone calls. We are averaging, we're actually running about nine less buses a day. Our routes have gotten better. They're fuller, which they need to be. They're not overcrowded. We have some overcrowding we're addressing, but we run about 186 buses a day, which is down from about 195 last year. Our mileage is down, run about 16, 16,500 miles a day right now, which is down almost 1,000 miles.
16,000 what?
500.
A day.
A day.
So that's, so that's all the runs together?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're six, it's over 625 daily routes. That includes the, the shuttles to EC3, the shuttles to Cosmetology in Hodgenville, the blind school, we, you know, we run to the blind school every day in Louisville. So people say, well, I see your buses everywhere. Well, that's because they are everywhere.
That's because they go everywhere.
Everywhere, every day. I think Christmas Day is about the only time you won't see us with a bus on the road. But the routes are getting better. Our, our on-time percentages to schools are getting better. That will hiccup a little bit next week when preschool starts, because there's a little bit of an adjustment. Thanks, Carlina.[724.00][724.00](Laughter). But we'll, we'll, we'll adjust. The early release really helps, really helps with that. Traffic, just general traffic, I mean, you all all drive, is up. We've, we've really had to adjust some times, especially in the southern end of the county around Blue Oval. It's, we're, we're, we're getting there, but there are, there are, there's just going to be days that we're going to be late. I mean, there's, there's no way around it, and that's going to, that's going to be a problem probably for the foreseeable future. But we're adjusting to that. Some things we're kind of working on with the state. We're going to add some school zone signs on Ring Road at Central Harden, because we're coming out and ended out there specifically now. We're not going out the front, so we've been in contact with the state. Hope to get those up pretty quick. Also working with the state on a crosswalk at North Harden, right there at Wilma, because we have probably 100, 120 kids that are crossing there every day, looking to maybe get a digital sign there of some sort to get people to slow down. You know, people drive too fast around schools. Our local police do a great job.
Yes, they do.
Those problem areas we have, we can call, they can get somebody over there. But, you know, if I could urge one thing to the public, just slow down. Just, just slow down. We've, we've had a couple of stop-by violations already that we've turned over, and people just don't pay attention. You know, it's, it's the brightest, biggest vehicle on the road, and they still, they still want to go around them. So knock on wood, currently fully staffed with drivers, still hiring for subs. Mechanics, we're in the process of bringing, we've got a retirement coming up, so we've got that position already filled with a person, so we're fully staffed there. The, the commitment that you made to those guys, it, it has really paid off. Our applicants this time were much higher quality applicants than we've had in the past.
Great.
That's, that's good.
So other than fixing the district up north, if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to, glad to answer them.
Chris, we're still saving on fuel with our, the way we purchased?
Yeah, we're, it, it's, it's, right now, you could count an average of about $100,000 a month we're saving. And it's, it looks like it, everything I read today, it's going back up. So the goal is $82 a barrel today. So.
So how, how tight are we on space in, in your facility up there? Like parking space for buses, places to work?
Well, we, we have so many parkouts, Mr. Seago, you know, not everybody, in the summer, it gets really cramped, because we, we get a, a lot more buses in. Throughout the year, we're fine. You know, our, our garage facility's fine. It's, it, it's the summer that it gets, gets a little cramped. You know, now, as population grows, you know, and, and we're running our 186 buses a day goes to 220, then, then we might have to have, you know, some conversations. But right now, right now, everything's pretty good.
What about the East Harden Roundabout? I was going to ask that too. What, what's taking place there?
Well, to my knowledge, it's complete.
That's all they're going to do. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all they're going to do.
And it's, they sent us some really neat drone footage that I'll be glad to forward to you all of, I think it was the second or third day of school. And, you know, it, it's, you can remember back when they put the one in Rainyville, and everybody thought, oh, that'll never work, that'll never work, that'll never work. And I knew people that would go down and sit in a lawn chair and watch it, because they were just amazed by it. So it just, I'm serious, that's a true story. But they, it's.[956.44][956.44](Laughter).
Well, you know, I guess what I was concerned about is, I have witnessed this year since school started, but our last school meeting was in East, and we sat in the parking lot like 30 to 40 minutes that afternoon, and it was a mess out there.
Yeah, yeah. The traffic count in general is up on New Glendale. It has been up. You know, it was up, it was up before we ever built New East, and then it just added on and added on and added on. I don't know, we're not, we're not, knock on wood, we're not seeing any major, major delays in and out of there right now. But traffic does back up. You know, it backs up onto the bypass, it backs up in all three directions at certain times of the day, but.
The, the smaller roundabouts, this summer, I watched one of our buses, I'm, I'm not sure where it was going or what it was doing, but it was near the hospital, the, the roundabout right behind the hospital, near the liquid oxygen tanks there. Our buses don't fit that thing.
They're very, some of the smaller ones, like the ones that aren't raised, that are kind of flat, a lot of times, we don't go around those. You know, we just, we just, we just go.
The driver was trying to, but it just didn't fit.
Yeah, it's.
In that roundabout.
They, they, they were, I don't know if they were cramped for space there or what. And that's, that's the question a lot of people have, is why would you put one there when there's not enough space for people to act? Even, who drives a small vehicle anymore? You know, we talk about this all the time. Just think about parking spaces. If you drive a truck or an SUV, you know, and the roads are, they're, they're making those roundabouts like everybody's driving a Ford Escort. That's, I'm dating myself there, but, you know, it's, that's kind of the way that some of them look. But yeah, buses have, there are some, we have some issues, and that's, the, the good thing they didn't do there is they didn't put a big curb on those.
Yeah, that one doesn't have a big curb.
They're kind of flat.
I, I presume they wouldn't be able to get oxygen to the hospital if they had, because that's the route they have to go.
Sure, yeah. But it's, it's just, it's like these J-turns, you know, that we don't use.
You can't use them, right?
We can't use them, but, you know, they've, they've seen, from all intensive purposes, they worked. You know, I, it was like everybody else, that didn't ever work, that didn't ever work, but they seem to work.
And, and we've had fewer accidents too, so.
Right, right.
Well, that's, okay, new things, but, you know, unbelievable, we run a safe program in it. It really helps, like the 5000 last week on 62, and I think there was another wreck.
Say Friday afternoon on 222.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it helps. That was near my house. That was a bad one.
I cannot say enough good things about KSP, Sheriff Ward, and all our local agencies. I mean, the minute something happens, my phone rings. And, and it always happens on, it seems like it happens on Friday afternoon. You know, we had two, two pretty major roads closed, and I think kids might have been 10, 12 minutes late getting home. So it's just.
Now, you didn't get any complaints?
Yeah.
No.
No, it was great.
But it's unbelievable, really.
But a lot of people picked up on the, the social media and things that were out saying they knew, you know, something was going on and what had happened. So that really helps.
Yeah, it very much does. Very much, yeah.
They appreciate that.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Recognition of visitors. We've had two visitors sign up to speak, and the first one is, if I'm reading correctly, Deanna Embry. I may have mispronounced that first name.
Deana.
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 Good evening, Board. Of course, you know my name is Deana Embry, and I'm here to do a follow-up on the suggestion of you all doing some type of checking into this, the library books that was mentioned to you all last month, and that little pamphlet was handed to you all for you all to read. And I'm just trying to find out what measurements that you have taken since then, or if you've looked into the books, and what is your thoughts on those?
So generally speaking, at board meetings, if you would like to come in and meet with us and have those conversations, we would be happy to do that. But this is a time for you to share, but not for a time for the board to respond, because we do have people in different positions, such as Mr. Sutton, who is our chief academic officer, who will be happy to sit down with you and discuss our procedures for that. But we do ask the board not to exchange during board meetings. But we would be happy to sit down and meet with you to discuss that.
So when is a good appointed time, or where, who would I contact to get some?
Mr. Sutton will meet with you to give you phone numbers, just a couple of different ones. You can always call our office, but we will certainly sit down with you and go through our processes and procedures for that for any, any parent or guardian who has concerns, and he can take you through that process.
And I do have another question. There is a lot of parents that have students that goes to these schools with us that, you know, attend Harden County Schools and go into the libraries. There is a lot of parents that are not informed on these books that these kids have access to. And my concern and a lot of other people's concern with parents not knowing how, that is another one of the questions, is what are you all going to do to make it aware to the parents about the material that the kids have access to, that they may not, or some of them may know, but a lot of them don't know about these inappropriate books.
Okay. If you don't mind, I'll have Mr. Sutton to walk out with you, so you all can exchange information, so we can make sure to get back with you.
Okay, and I am standing in for Bobby Coleman. She brought that material to you all last month, and she is out of town, and she asked me if I would just do a follow-up.
That's, and it may be convenient if you want to wait until she gets back in town.
Oh, she'll be back in town tomorrow, so I can get the information for her, and that way she can do, she can call and, and, and get the follow-up, and we'll do it from there. Thank you all.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, and next we have Bobby Alexander.
Superintendent, Board, I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to be here this afternoon and speak for a couple of minutes. I really hate to rain on the parade. It's been a great deal of positivity since I walked in that door from the previous speakers and so forth, but it's sometimes you just have to face facts as they are. And so I try to deal in facts, truths, not what we want it to be. So I, I'd like to share something with you. How many, life, 50 years from 1986. It's a very thick book. It covers 1936 to 1986, 50 years. And there's a writer that wrote a very long and very interesting article in here. I think I just lost my page. I never will, as long as I've been in service and, and schools and public speaking, I never will understand why I still get nervous. I find that all the time. But anyway, maybe I won't be able to find it, but it's in here, and if I can't find it here real quick, I'm going to move on. I thought it was on 186. I'll move on. Okay, I'm going to move on. I'll bring that back next time, because I will be back, good Lord willing. I'd just, I'd just like to talk about some of the national results. I spent some time researching what's happening to education in Ameri, America, because there's so much written about it. You can hear both sides of the coin about how great it is or how not great it is, and anything in between. And so I did some research, and, and I went to the National Assessment of Educational Progress and to their nation's report card, nationsreportcard.gov, and some of the things I want to share with you. One, one of them that just grabbed me immediately was 24% of 13-year-olds report taking algebra in 2023, taking algebra in 2023, that's down from 34% a decade ago. So that's, that's a significant percentage of students that's not taking a very difficult course. Long-term mathematics and long-term reading, the percentiles are considerably lower in 2023. I'm sorry, from 20 to 23. It's, it's just difficult as, as a citizen. I don't, by the way, I don't have any children, never had any children in Harden County School Systems. I'm just an interested citizen that wants things to be better for all of us, every one of us. I want life to be better. And it takes people to work to make those things happen, not just organize peoples like boards. It's just takes some people, and that's why I'm here. In, in the June 2023 National Assessment of Educational Progress, NAEP, Long-Term Trend Report, shows declines in reading and math scores for 13-year-olds across the United States. Across the United States. Now, I have looked at our county, you can do that, by the way, you can look at Harden County's numbers if you choose to, as it's reported through this organization. In 2022, the scores were similar. Math and reading scores for fourth and eighth grade graders declined. Department of Education is concerned about lost instructional time, and we have to wonder about, why was, why do we have it? We all know why we had it. We had it because of COVID. And I heard the COVID mentioned in here today. It's time, in my opinion, that we stop blaming the COVID from the past and start looking to the fixes for the future. Lower evaluations is just not getting it done. I looked at the 2022 budget for this organization last year, and it's about $197 million that's published in the news enterprise. That is stupefying to anybody, any common person out on the street, $197 million. I'm sure it's probably considerably higher than that this year. What are we going to do to solve the COVID lost time problem? I, I want to give you an example. A school system in Virginia, Richmond, Virginia, in fact, they've added 20 instructional days funded by COVID-19 stimulus funds. What is Harden County doing to make up the loss of those students that were not here in this building, in their buildings? What are we doing? Is there a plan in place, or are we just going to continuously sit at the table and blame this and that on COVID-19? I want to see fixes, but I want to see cost-effective fixes that's good for the kids. I hear it till I'm sick of it in this county. It's for the kids, for the kids, for the kids. Well, show me that it's for the kids. And according to a 2022 National Center for Education Statistics Report, 4% of all teaching positions and 6% of all non-teaching positions in U.S. public schools were vacant. 4% of the teachers. That's approximately 300,000 in the United States. Have no clue what that number would be in Harden County. Why? I have to ask the question, why? It used to be an honorable profession. question, why? It used to be an honorable profession. People used to go to college. They looked forward to getting in college and getting that teaching degree and getting in a school somewhere and teaching. Why is that not the case today? What is happening in the schoolhouses that's causing teachers not to want to teach? Why are teachers retiring in such, in huge numbers? I think we all know why. Indoctrination, activism. And I can go a few, a little further than that, but I'll stop there. I think you get my drift. I know a young lady, she happens to be my granddaughter. She was a junior in high school last year. For her entire school year, not in Harden County, by the way, her entire school year last year, she did not have an algebra teacher. She had to fill in. One full school year of fill-in. Did she get cheated? I think she did. What's going, who cares? Where is somebody that cares about my granddaughter getting cheated out of her proper algebra instruction last year? Is it happening here in Harden County? I'll bet you $100 it is. What are we doing about it? How are we getting new teachers? I don't know the answer to that because I'm not part of the system. I guarantee you, if I was part of this system, I'd be digging deep with a whole lot of people. I wonder who y'all are digging with? How are you going to solve this problem? We cannot get education fixed until we get the, the classrooms filled with qualified teachers. That's just a simple fact of life. So, if, until we get that, we're cheating students. That's my viewpoint, and I believe I've got statistics to support it.
Mr. Alexander, I'm going to need to ask you to, up here, sorry. I'm going to need to ask you to wrap up. We usually try and limit this to two to three minutes.
I'll be back for my three minutes next month, God willing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And that was all for signed visitors. And that gets us to construction updates. We had several updates this afternoon from JRA. We've, lots, lots going on and lots more that needs to be going on, but overall, fairly good news. Things are moving along at Central Harden. Looking into starting the second phase there, hopefully on track to get some major milestones ready by September, September 1, parking lot ready, make things a little bit easier over there. And just some other updates on some of our other projects that are coming along as far as the HVAC project at Woodland, pretty much is completed, done over the, most of it done over the summer, and wrapping that up. And hoping to get some more bids and things in on a couple other projects. Project for our Child Development Center and also on our Child Nutrition Facility. And so, just a lot of things in the works and trying to get that, get that resolved and get everything moving on as quickly as possible. If I have anything to add to that. All right. Consideration the consent agenda. We have our instructional services, approval of the HCECTV contract for production services with Brannenberg Telecom for the live sports coverage for this upcoming year. We received the annual data security report, received the district technology plan, approval of a modified schedule for a student disability, student services, approval of December 9, 2023 graduation date for summer, fall, and winter graduates of Harden County High, College View, and E-School. Approval of Central Harden Wind Ensemble to travel to Louisville on February 9 via commercial carrier for cost efficiency. Approval of the interagency agreements between the Board of Education and Spectrum Care Academy and Lincoln Trail Behavioral Health Systems. Financial services, we received the monthly financial reports, orders of the treasurer, school activity fund balance, approval of the fiscal year '24 indirect cost rates, change order for Central Harden and school-wide fundraisers, received certified and classified personnel actions, then SBDM minutes, PAC minutes, board meeting minutes, and approval of the naming of part of a facility, approval of local revision to policy regarding use of alcohol, drugs, and other prohibited substances.
What was the meaning of that? It was Rita Havel.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's Central Harden High School.
Was that the baseball, basketball? What was that?
It's the locker room at Central.
Locker room, okay.
All right. Does anybody have anything they want to pull out, discuss, anything?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. Action items. I don't believe we have any. New business. Approval to reinstate the school-based decision-making council at Radcliffe Elementary.
So, Radcliffe Elementary has made progress in, I believe, in 2019, is that correct, Ms. Durman? 2019. At that time, they were a CSI school. However, they have been out of CSI since 2020. And so, at this time, they are seeking to reinstate the site-based council at Radcliffe Elementary. During this time, they have had a committee that has continued to work. It just hasn't been under an elected, it's been a voluntary program, and so this will reinstate their site-based council. But it will require a motion.
You need a motion for that?
Yes.
Well, I will move to reinstate the school-based decision-making council at Radcliffe Elementary.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to the superintendent's report.
Excellent. Just a little bit on the award. If people could see the questions, which were asked, not to share the questions for the Superintendent of the Year Award, you would quickly realize that that is an honor for this district. It is because of the hard work of our Board of Education and their commitment, but also the staff that's in our schools and our community. Today, we had a ribbon-cutting ceremony at John Harden High School. We had a bound credit union, German American Bank, and Planet Fitness, who had given a significant amount of money. And then today, you heard a student talking about going to a financial literacy camp this summer at Western Kentucky University. And again, a bound contributes to the financial literacy here in our district. So, I was talking to another superintendent about in co-op opportunities, and the superintendent shared that they have two opportunities in their county. One was at a pain management clinic, and the second was at a Dollar General store. And those were the only opportunities their students had in their entire county. So, we are incredibly fortunate here in Elizabethstown, Harden County, for all the partnerships that we have. So, just want to say thank you. For those waiting for the other schools, North Harden, we already have a date for that ribbon-cutting, I believe, Mr. Wright?
No definite date.
It's in the near future. And then Central Harden, when we're finished with construction next summer, we will begin there so that all three of our schools have that. But I asked John a little bit, put this up here. This is a way you can, so if you are watching from home, you should actually be able to take your camera and zoom in on the QR code here, or go to our website and apply to be a volunteer. People ask, how can I become involved? So, if you are recently retired or long-term retired, or you are looking to make a commitment to give back to the community, this is an opportunity for you to do so. You can come after you have passed a volunteer background check. We would love to have individuals to come into our school, listen to kids read, do math facts with them. We promise not to give you trigonometry or calculus to do once you enter the building. But you do have an opportunity to make a difference in your community. We had an individual, Ms. Lynn, we'll do a moment of silence for her next month, but she was 85 years old. She worked in our learn, Early Learning Academy, and she passed away recently, but her family talked about how much she enjoyed giving back and having kids in her lap and reading to them on a regular basis. So, if you're looking to make an impact, this is a great way to do it, and we would love to have you to make that difference that Mr. Alexander talked about for our students, because some of our students do not have the luxury of having a parent to be able to sit and read with them nights. Some of our families, the parents are working two jobs, and so it's a hardship for them. So, our students love that individual attention that our volunteers could give. And finally, want to do a huge shout-out to our Transportation Department and our custodians, our teachers. If you go to our buildings, number one, you see buses, you see drivers greeting our students with friendly faces. We were blessed to have everyone home that first day by 5:23. That was the text I received. They're all home. And what a luxury that is. Don't take that for granted. It takes a lot of hard work and planning. But we also had multiple open houses for our families. Tonight was preschool open house, and so we have a whole new group coming in. So, again, you'll start to see even smaller children coming into school. And again, just appreciation for our faculty and staff who have made it a phenomenal start to the school year. So, thank you.
Thank you. We do not need an executive session, is that right?
No.
Okay. Board calendar, August 23, first day of school for preschool students. September 4, Labor Day, offices will be closed. September 21 at 11:30 a.m., our regular lunch board meeting at EC3. And then 6 p.m. here back at central office. And then September 27 at 11, the HCS Distinguished Alumni Luncheon at EC3.
Out of motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for coming out.